One ready? Hello? Hello? Hello?
You're on.
Okay. All right, we're going to get this meeting started. Today's May 5th. Happy Cinco de Mayo. We're going to start off with ordinance number three. Councilmember Friend in ordinance amending section 2-18-48.5. Exceptions by the addition of paragraph C 1 and 1 prohibiting vehicular traffic in and around Valley View Golf Course via Master Garden Road and Steel Road on Sundays between April 15th and October 31st.
So I'm going to be swapping this out. So I'm going to be amending the one that is in committee for this one. This is the more technical version of it, and that's it, leaving it in committee.
Okay. Moving on, we will go to proposed ordinance number one. Councilmember Williamson, no parking at all times. Ordain that section 2-616-360 Schedule E no parking at all times is amended to include the following. Eagle Street North Side between Stuben Street to a point 50 feet westernly on Eagle Street. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected wherever necessary.
You guys know it's right in front of the store, right? They don't want parking in front of the discount store?
They don't want the Eagle Market, right?
They don't want parking in front of the Eagle Market, right? Are you positive? Well, I would hold it because it's, this takes parking away right in front of that discount retail food store. This is moody.
So we're going to hold off on this one until Delvin is here?
Yeah, I have the email from the chief. And we passed it along, I believe, when we sent out the...
Yeah.
Yeah. So it says, "Chief Williams contacted by Tracy Mills, Mayor's Administrative Assistant, in regards to a complaint that she received from the city's codes office. They had a concern about pedestrian vehicular safety in the vicinity of 167 Eagle Street. I checked the city ordinance website to see if there was any current legislation that pertained to this area. I was not able to find any legislation restricting parking in this area. I responded to the area and observed the following. The discount retail food store is located on the northern curb line of Eagle Street at the corner of Eagle Street and Stuben Street. If there are vehicles parked along the northern curb in front of 167 Eagle Street, it will obstruct the vision of vehicles attempting to enter the intersection from Stuben Street onto Eagle Street. This causes vehicles to enter the flow of traffic blindly from Stuben Street onto Eagle Street. This result, this results in a hazard to both vehicle and pedestrian traffic in this area, and I am recommending the following. Section 2-16-360 Schedule E no parking at all times. Eagle Street North Side between Stuben Street to a point 50 feet westernly on Eagle Street."
We can hold it.
So I just want you guys to know that there's a business there, and you're taking the parking away from the front of that business. So if, I agree with you about the safety part of it, but I think the councilman should know...
Yeah, he should be here to explain what's going on with it.
All right.
So we'll hold that one for now.
That's another question.
That's why we're waiting for...
That's another question. We got to find out.
So resolution number two. Full counsel, Commissioner of Deeds for Lawrence Joseph and Rose Marie Joseph. Next is a resolution for a public hearing on the discontinuance of a portion of Ash Street and the sale of same.
Shall conduct the public hearing. We got to get a date for the public hearing. A date.
Next meeting?
The next meeting.
So May 19th?
Yeah.
Actually, I just suggested, I believe in my memo, I suggested you make the public hearing properly your second meeting in June because we have to also send it to the planning board for a report. And it also has to be noticed in the newspaper twice. So I guess I would ask the second meeting in June for the public hearing.
Clerk, we have a date on that?
It would be the second meeting...
Sixteenth. Sixteenth of June. We'll set that for...
Sixteenth it is.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Next is ordinance number four. It's an ordinance providing for the discontinuance of a portion of, uh, this one goes with that one.
Yep.
It's got to go to committee.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Councilman Beatrice, ordinance number five, no parking at all times. Ordain that section 2-16-360 Schedule E no parking at all times is amended to include the following. Ludlow Ave East Side between Rucker Street and Park Street. Ludlow Ave West Side between Rucker Street and Park Street. Be it further ordained the proper signage be erected where necessary. Councilman Beatrice, would you talk about this?
Yes, I want to amend that too. I want it to be Ludlow, East Side, and Park Street. I want to take away between Rucker and Park Street, and I want it to be on east and west on both sides. Guys, you guys familiar with what I'm talking about, where we're talking?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the clerk has that.
So it'd be Ludlow Avenue East Side...
So it should read Ludlow Avenue East Side and Park Street.
And Park Street.
And Ludlow Avenue West Side and Park Street.
Okay.
Okay?
So you're just taking out the between Rucker and Park Street?
Yes, yep.
Any other pieces of legislation that we want to discuss that are in committee?
I'm going to discharge my local law. Just get rid of it.
Okay.
Clear the packet a little bit.
Very kind of you.
You're welcome.
That would be local law number five of 2020.
Yes, that's correct.
Anything else?
I'd like to, I had a motion that we put on the table at the end of the last meeting to unsuspend our rules of order, and now that we know that at our next meeting, so I'd like to take that back up.
Okay.
So I'll introduce that when I...
And something else I'd like to discuss too. I know a while back when we were talking about having everybody come into the chambers, we had come up with guidelines that we had felt comfortable with at that time. I asked President Gleme to bring that back up so that we could go back through it. I know with things opening back up, I kind of wanted to see where everyone felt comfortable so that we can be fully prepared for when that does happen, and we can kind of come up with our own guidelines at this point. So...
I'm searching for the document as we speak. Yeah.
You're searching for the state document?
But in general though, I'll, I'll find that document. But in the meantime, if we do have people in the chambers, I figured what we would do was measure out the actual gallery similar to how all the other places are doing it, and just mark off with...
Ex-mart the seats with some tape?
Yeah, we'll mark it with tape, and we'll follow all the guidelines in accordance with whatever the current executive order is at the time of the meeting, and...
So it'd be a COVID occupancy limit?
Yeah, exactly.
So I feel like some people are happy with the three feet, some people are happy with the six feet. Maybe we should be overly cautious at this point and do the six feet?
Okay.
How about, how about, you're kind of, like I know when you go to church, they usually block off every other row. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think President Gleme brought a tape measure, and we were going to measure and see where six feet went and see kind of just how we can, or three feet, whatever.
Do you want to fever test them on the way in, make them sign a document that they're here just in case?
Right, so I have, I also have a, I could use the example one which I was going to give to the clerk for my wife's school. It's a small piece of paper. Basically, you have to verbally acknowledge all of the, that you don't have any symptoms, all the normal stuff we're used to, and then that you just attest that you're truthfully saying that. And then the temperature test, similar to what we do for us, and anything else?
And we require masks.
I think we should have a roster where they could print their name and phone number.
Exactly. Yeah, because we need to do contact tracing for these people around.
Move somewhere over there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
You know, in the church, in the church where they do every other pew because they don't want anybody sitting in back of you regardless of the distancing. So if you go to almost every church, I've been to three of them so far in the last couple of months, they put a marker, green and red, on each pew. The red pew, like St. John's for the funeral a couple of weeks ago, red pew is a no. The green pew is a yes. So you, you section out the green pew with the six foot, six feet distances, and only so many people. And what you'll find that there, we have the same, there only could be so many pews going to be used. And we will also, by that, you'll know just how many people you can let in. Because once, once you divide those pews by six feet, you're only going to get like three or four people at maybe the close...
All right, so when we walk through the guidelines, Michael, you're going to walk through the guidelines?
You're going to have to limit the number of people that come in here. And the way you do it is that you, you also put like a marker for the distance and use every other pew. That's why nobody's standing in back here breathing on you.
Yeah.
So I think that's how you do it. And you do it with a red, red marker and a green marker.
Right.
Green marker means you can sit in this pew, and you can only sit so many. Red marker means no one. And I think that way you have done it, you complied with all of the guidelines. And then that's going to mean there's just going to be so many people, many people allowed. And you just tell, the officer's going to have to count. When it gets to a certain number, sorry, there can't have any more people.
Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor?
Can I just, I'm just asking a question. Like, am I far-fetched in asking, like I know in a lot of places where there's groups, you either have to show that you had a test within 48 hours, or you had a vaccine paper? Is that something?
I don't think we need to, I think we just need to follow everything else that stores and...
I mean, like, like I mean at the auditorium...
Whatever we feel comfortable with. So if someone, if everyone feels comfortable with making sure that it's people who have had the full vaccine, or people who have had the test within however many...
A week's period?
Hours, that's up to us.
I'm only saying that because I do some work at the auditorium. Before any hockey game, there's somebody there. They either have to have proof that they had their vaccine, or they've had a test within the last 48 hours. I'm just, I don't care if we go that way or not. I'm just saying that that's, you know, they do that in a lot of places. I mean, we're not fully opening because I believe the administration wants to wait till every person...
Well, we're Guinea pigs.
We're essentially Guinea pigs. So that's why I'm saying it is completely up to whatever we feel comfortable with to open things back up.
I mean, the card, the card's a great idea because we're starting off slowly, and if you don't have a card with both shots, you know, that's, it's good for our safety also, guys, you know what I mean? So that is an avenue plus...
I feel comfortable with that. How do you feel? Do you want a card?
I don't think it's necessary.
How do you feel?
I'll take the card. You know why? Because they have another avenue to bring their information via, because this is going to keep on going, right?
Well, I'm not so much of the card, but at least showed that you had a test. I mean...
Card or test, right. Card or test.
How do you feel?
Oh, that's...
That's notable.
Yeah.
That goes without saying, but I think that these are extra stipulations. So it's going to be six feet every other pew at this point. And then I think another stipulation we're putting in there is actually being tested or having, you know, both shots, or one if it's a Johnson and Johnson.
I'm assuming all my colleagues got their cards, right?
Yeah.
Neither do I.
Well, it's a majority of whoever feels whatever way. So that's why I was...
I, I'm actually with Councilman DeBranco on that. I don't, I don't feel we need a test or the vaccination card. I think everything else, every single other restaurant, we've all been going to. We've all been pretty freely operating in society right now, and that's been on our own accord that we're going to follow the current guidelines for either social distancing, wearing the mask. And upon entry, I think, like what we were saying earlier, I think we're, the way we should handle it is that we have the, we have the roster. Everyone has to sign in, give their phone number, no different than church, restaurants, other types of events. And we mark off the pews so that there's, there's guidelines in the actual council room that people have to follow. And we, and once we calculate the amount of people that can be in here, we'll have to announce that prior to the next meeting so that, you know, it's known that there's going to be a capacity limit. I do think that vaccines, proof of vaccine and, and/or a test is overly restrictive for the public meetings. Yeah, I, I really don't think that that's something for us to do. I mean, granted, it's up to you, but even the judge is up here saying it's unconstitutional as well. I'd be totally against it publicly.
All right, let's do it this way then. What temperature would you say that a person cannot occupy after your temperature's taken?
Well, it's same as, same as the guidelines. It's same...
Well, anything over, what, 90, 99, 100? You can't get in here.
Correct.
So I think it would be the same for anyone else who came in.
Okay, so then you got to, let's set parameters then. Does the police officer check you when you come in? Does he have the sign-in sheet?
Yes.
Let's, let's get a format, so we're all set on the same format. So let's start with a person walking in. He gets checked by the police officer. He gets, he or she gets their temperature taken. He signs a complete sheet. The officer checks the sign-in sheet, makes sure all the information's there, then he can enter the building. The officer also keeps track of the amount of people coming into the building as it limits to COVID, you know, occupancy.
Correct.
We figure out however many people can fit in here. And I, I don't know how I feel about, like, groups of people. So if you have six feet, I feel like one person per six feet, I don't feel like it should be like, okay, we all came as a group, so we're all sitting in this one spot. You know what I mean?
Okay.
The social distancing should be mandatory regardless if people say they're a group or not.
Who's going to make the little fill-out card? Hello, Eddie?
I'll do it.
Yeah, we could provide, yeah, we could, the clerk and I...
You're going to do a fill-out card for them?
There's a man in the hour, all those things you want to do with the police officer.
Deputy Chief Noonan, we can have some extra duties for your chief officer.
We need your police officer in the front to handle a lot more duties at this point. Once we open up City Hall, he needs to take temperatures of everybody coming in.
And we're going to get him to do a sign-in sheet for everybody?
Yeah, they already have all this out here. Yeah.
Yeah, but, but that doesn't take into account the email or information for tracking just in case there is an outbreak in this area. At least we can inform the people that were at the meeting.
Technically, it does. I think when it's us, because it's us, they already have the information, but they are, they are doing that right now. But we'll make a spreadsheet, so it's a whole fill-out. That way they have all the information.
Thank you.
And that other card that they have to take, the thing that they have to take with them that's, you know, that you attested to the fact that you didn't have symptoms, you hadn't been exposed, and that, you know, all the typical things.
The same one they got in school.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. How many are electric and how many are, are how many are green? What?
I'm with you.
You got my vote. You got my vote.
You don't want those things in the winter time. Please, you don't want them in the winter.
You have my vote, Deputy Chief.
I did find the document, by the way. I have it shared. But it's, it's going to be pretty, it's probably overly, overly restrictive at this point because our guidelines that when we were...
From the beginning.
Yeah, we were like right in the middle of, in the thick of it.
But this shows that we've all wanted to get back.
Yes.
All right, how about this now? You have to post those guidelines somewhere in the chambers so people can see them. For example, you must wear your mask...
Masks up. I think at this point, everyone knows, yes, we should post it. But I think at this point, it's common knowledge that you need to wear a mask, you need to...
I have a different suggestion.
I think we can maybe...
Well, you were probably just going to say, let's just, we could print a handout.
Put it online as well. Put it online.
Exactly. Our capacity's probably going to be around 40 people.
Okay.
So let's just, we could just print them. Everyone gets a handout.
Mr., when you, when you figure out what exactly the capacity's going to be, can you let us all know?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll post it. That way there, everyone knows.
People will be camping out, you know?
Yes.
It'll be like Pokemon cards and baseball cards.
Hey, it's very, it's grassy out there. Get to ten times Tuesday night.
Got to get into the council meeting.
I think we should put the podium over here.
Yes, that's, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
All right.
Right next to you.
How about over there?
Right by the door. All right. So we're all on the same page of where we're at and what we want?
Yeah, we'll have it all.
It's posted on the front door here. At this point, I, I feel like it's every time you leave your house and your parents are like, drive carefully. Like, I know. You know what I mean? So at this point, everyone knows you have to wear a mask. You have to be courteous. You have to keep your distance. You have to... We're just reiterating it. It's on the front door. But we just have to figure out what we're comfortable with in this chamber.
For capacity, yes.
So, once we adjourn the meeting, we'll measure things out, figure it out, and then we'll post how many people. Okay. Anything else we want to discuss? Meeting adjourned?
All right. See everyone at 7:00. Alright. See everyone at seven.
...May 5, 2021. We're going to call this meeting of the City of Utica Common Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
McNeil, Burmester, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice Williamson, LaMedico, DeBrango, Gleamy, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business this evening is the minutes. I have them presented on the screen before us.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes, please.
We have a second from Miola. Any opposed? Okay, everyone has accepted the minutes. We're going to move on. Next order of business this evening is public hearing. We have no legislation to hold a public hearing on, so the public hearing is now closed. We have no people signed up to speak for public comment. So what I'd like to do now is bring up Nicholas DiVicaro. He has a presentation regarding flag design and City of Utica's flag. Thank you. Yeah, pull the mic up. Just do a quick mic check.
Hello? Check one, two.
It's all right. Hang on just one second. We good?
Does it work?
Yep, just speak up, we should be good. Yeah.
It's not working.
There we go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're good.
All right. Well, thank you for having me tonight. So before we start, I just want to take a little time just to discuss a little bit about Utica.
Okay.
So Utica, when you think about it...
Introduce yourself.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm Nicholas DiVicaro. It's nice to meet all of you, and I'm really happy to be here. This is truly unique, and I never thought I'd be ever doing something like this. All right. So let's talk a little bit about Utica. Utica truly is a unique city when you think about it. We're one of the six largest metro areas in all of New York State. We have a high refugee population, which makes Utica a melting pot of culture. You know, last Saturday, I actually went to a restaurant. It's called Lotus Gardens in downtown. And the family there is actually refugees from Cambodia who came to Utica, and they opened their restaurant to share their culture. It's truly unique that we have people like that in the city. So why is it that a city like Utica so unique with culture and so much pride, not that well represented through the flag that we use? That's why I created this slide, so to better represent Utica. Slide. So around the start of COVID-19, I got into flags. I watched this video where this guy, he has a small flag collection, and he really loves flags. So he decided to email every embassy in the world and ask for a flag. While in that video, he explained the importance of flags, and I never, I never thought that there was, that flags are so important. Flags are great at showing things like history, geography, and politics, which are three of my most favorite things, by the way. Next slide. But flags are also really great at showing pride. I fly an American flag outside of my house because I am proud to be an American. I don't just fly it because I like the flag. I fly it because I am proud to be an American, and I'm proud to show my pride. So why is it that Utica, a city that I am so proud to be from and that I love so much, not have that nice of a flag that I can fly outside of my house? Next slide, please. According to the North American Vexiological Association, flags that follow the seal on a bed sheet model, or the SOB, are considered to be the worst-designed flags in all of North America. Sadly, Utica is an SOB. Most city flags are just terribly designed, and many cities follow the SOB model, and are just not that well appealing. You can see here, we have the City of Anaheim, City of Portland, Maine, Utica, Parkdale, Milwaukee, and San Francisco. Just, flags like that are just not well-designed, and they're not great at representing the thing that they are trying to represent. Slide. There are three rules when it comes to flags. No seals. Seals belong on paper, where you can see them, or you can get up close and you could read them. If you put a seal on a flag, you're not going to be able to tell what it is from far away. Even up close, when it's flapping in the wind, it's going to be hard to tell what it is. No writing. If you have to put the name of your city on your flag, then you did a terrible job at differentiating your flag from other cities. City, many cities have decided to change their flags, though. Cities such as Chicago have changed their flag to be more representing of their city.
Which one, Chicago?
So the flag of the blue bars and four stars is the flag of Chicago, D.C., and it all has meaning. Four stars represent major parts of Chicago's history. The flag of the Amsterdam is the coat of arms for the city. The flag of Washington, D.C., is actually the coat of arms stretched out into a flag of George Washington. There are many cities that have changed their flag to represent their, their city and their people. And although Utica's not as big as the cities are, that doesn't change the fact that, you know, we can still have a great flag. We can represent ourselves in a great way and differentiate ourselves from other cities around New York State.
Next slide.
Yep. Cities like Chicago, their flag is so iconic that it has become a defining part of city life. If you go into Chicago, you will see that flag flying outside of pretty much every building. They, they love the flag so much there that some officers request that if they die, they would rather have the flag of Chicago placed over their casket. They sell the flag on merchandise at stores, and some people love it so much that they even get a tattoo of it. Next slide.
Oh, that's a tattoo.
So with Utica now changing, especially if the flag changes with it to reflect its history and the new revitalization of the city. So flag design number one. The colors represent New York State, the state that Utica is settled in. The two yellow lines represent the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal that goes through the city. The star at the top left represents Utica as a shining city. In variant two, same as variant one, the colors and the lines mean the same, but the star in the middle represents the city and how it's centrally located in New York State. Flag design number two. These flag variants all have the same meaning but are stylized in different ways. These colors represent New York and how it used to be a Dutch colony. The two orange lines represent the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal, and each star represents a time in history. The first star, the first star represents the founding of the city in 1798. The second star represents the peak of Utica The second star represents the peak of Utica and being industrial powerhouse, and the last star represents modern-day Utica, and how it is once again a city that is growing and that is becoming great again. Flag design number three uses a series of three six-pointed stars. Like flag design two, each star represents a different part of history in Utica. The six points on the star represent how Utica is the sixth-largest metro area in New York. The two lines, of course, represent the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal. The yellow represents the iconic Gold Dome Bank, which is a defining part of the Utica City skyline, and the black represents how the role that Utica played during the Underground Flag design four has the same representation as flag design three, but the color blue represents the water of the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal. Now, flag design five, my favorite flag design, actually, has the same color representation as design three. The five stars represent five of the most iconic and historic sites in Utica. Stanley Theater, the Golden Dome Bank, Union Station, Munson-Williams Proctor Art Institute, the FX Matbury, and the six-pointed stars represent the sixth part of Utica history. The French and Indian War, which happened where Utica was then settled on. Utica being established in 1798, Utica and the Underground Railroad, Utica established as a textile hub, Utica helping towards the war effort in World War II, and modern-day Utica history, of Utica now becoming a great city. The two lines represent, of course, the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal. It's a trend. But together, they form the train tracks that represent the Utica Railroad. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions about the Vexiological Society, the research Mr. DiVicaro has done?
I do.
Okay.
I, I missed one thing. So you said the rules were, one, no seals, two, no writing. What was the third rule?
Be distinguishable.
Okay, okay. And then the other question, what do we know about the history of our current flag? Do you know much about that?
There's not much history other than, there's history, of course, for the seal of representing the indigenous people that used to live on this land, but I believe that, of course, seals do not belong on flags, as according to the Vexiological Society, and it's not that representative of the current city.
Okay, thank you very much. I found that, yeah, very interesting.
Awesome. Yeah, awesome.
Councilman Moody?
Yeah, so first, first I want to say, thank you for the presentation, well-thought-out. I think about, I have an affinity toward heraldry and stuff like that. My family has a coat of arms and seal, so, so I'm all in to, to the presentation that you had and the symbolism that you presented and showed. My, my question is, two, two questions. I see that you use blue, white, and yellow a lot. Is that just personal preference, or do you like those color combinations?
Those colors go well together. I'm actually in an advertising class, and I did have a lot of help from my teacher, and I was well-taught about colors and which ones go well together. And the colors, of course, do have meaning, like the blue does represent the, the Mohawk River, the water, and the, the black does represent the role that Utica played during the Underground Railroad.
Right.
The yellow, in one of the flag designs, represents the Gold Dome Bank. I also, you can substitute that, it also reflects the, how Utica is a shining city that is once again growing, and, yeah.
Yeah, it, so yes, Utica has a lot of history, particularly with the Underground Railroad abolition movement, I mean, a lot of national figures came from this area. So my question is, I think that the role of the council is to represent the people of Utica.
Mm-hmm.
I think it is to empower great ideas when we see them, and I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
My question would be, and I'm sure my colleagues would be open to this, certainly not to make the decision about a flag, but to assemble a commission or a task force to look into it, to see what other cities have done in the past, but not the only city that probably had to deal with this idea suggestion. And my question to you would be, not to put you on the spot, but if we were to think about some sort of committee to look at this, to look at the potential of it, would you be willing to lead that or have a leading role on that?
Definitely. I would love to.
Thank you, thank you. That's all of my questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I just want to say that you did a wonderful job, and the last one, I like it the best, like you do, because it tells a story, and the story you told on the last flag was very meaningful, and thank you for sharing it. Thank you very much.
Can you show that one again?
Yes. Let me go back.
And, and say, and describe it again? That was the one with the six-pointed stars, yeah?
Yeah. So, this one has five stars that each represent probably what I would consider to be the most historic and iconic sites of Utica, which it would be the Stanley Theater, the Gold Dome Bank, Union Station, Munson-Williams, the Matbury. And the six points represent the sixth part of Utica history, the French and Indian War, the establishment of Utica in 1798, Utica and the Underground Railroad, Utica established as a textile hub, Utica helping towards the war effort in World War II, and modern-day Utica history. And the two lines represent the Mohawk River and the Erie Canal, but together they form train tracks that represent the Utica Railroad.
It also, there are six, it's a six-pointed star, and there are six wards in the city.
That's interesting.
So let's do it, council, let's put something together.
Can I ask a, a basic legal question? Who is there, what's the, who has which, what kind of authority here?
Well, so...
Can the council?
Well, first, let's, let's do this. Nick, Mr. DiVicaro, thank you very much. The presentation was great, and, does anyone have any other questions for, for Nick in particular? Or you can go back to the gallery if you want, and then we can continue with the meeting, and we'll continue the discussions on the, the legal aspect of where the council might, you know, contribute to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
All right, so, just real quick to, just to address part of, partly of what you're asking, and how Nick DiVicaro ended up here. Essentially, he had approached the mayor's office and discussed the fact that he wanted to discuss or potentially present something like this to the city in general. The mayor then directed him to approach the council and present it to the council. As far as it goes from there, I think if, if the council members, you know, outside of this meeting want to approach Corporation Council or anything that might want to be considered, that's fine. But, very good presentation, and thank you for taking the time and studying Utica's history to put together such a presentation. Thank you. All right. All right, so our next order of business is communications from the mayor. We do have a mayor's message this evening, May 5th, 2021. This is the mayor's message to the common council. This is obviously written as if the mayor is speaking. Reference below are some updates I wanted to share with the common council. The next common council meeting, May 19th, will be open to in-person public participation. I have to say, the building will be open so that the council may have that meeting, and I thanked the council earlier, this is me talking right now, to having the discussion on how we might have that meeting, and thank you to the mayor for agreeing to finally open in the building. Back to the mayor's message. This is phase one of reopening City Hall. I will continue to communicate with public health officials, as our target is to reopen City Hall later this month. This is subject to change based on the current COVID-19 infection rate at the time that the building may be opened. Legislation amending the current fee structure to rent the city's bandshell will be submitted for council consideration for its May 19th meeting. A memo will accompany legislation expressing the reasoning behind amending the fee structure. In coordination with the National Guard, on Thursday, May 13th, two CH-47 Chinook helicopters will land in F.T. Proctor Park to transport military personnel from Utica to Fort Drum to conduct a fire training exercise. This is done annually, last year was an exception due to COVID-19. The operation will last between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. This is the conclusion of the mayor's message to the council. Do we have any miscellaneous communications this evening?
No miscellaneous communications.
Okay, reports from the city officers. Mayor Chief?
No reports.
Chief Ingersoll, thank you. Deputy Chief Noonan?
I'll do your report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner of Codes?
I, I have nothing to report, other than to say that we have an inordinate amount of complaints regarding dog feces. Just remind everybody to clean up after our four-legged family members.
Thank you.
That's all.
I'm with you on that. I'm about to set up hunting cameras in my front yard, see who's doing it.
I, I, listen, I've been in codes a long time, I've never gotten this many calls. I, I don't know what's into people. Yeah, but it breaks every year.
Okay.
I love my dog, stop your dog.
Thanks, thank you.
It's against the law. It's against the law to have your dog defecate on somebody else's property.
All right, petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. You want to start this evening?
No. I have to, I don't know if you want to.
Oh, yeah, Corporation Council is on. Corporation Council, you have anything to report this evening?
Thank you for remembering me. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're all set. All right, so petitions, remonstrances, and appeals, First District and Majority Leader, Maria Neely, at the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much this evening, I just wanted to say, it was really nice driving down the streets on the actual sunny days we've had this past couple weeks, seeing people taking a lot of civic pride in cleaning up the fronts of their, whether it's their apartment or houses that they own. It's just really nice seeing people out there and taking pride in what they own. So, thank you, that's all.
All right, Second District, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't have anything at this time, but thank you.
Thank you. Third District, Councilperson Fred?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just want to commend everybody who turned out, as Maria was saying, last Saturday, the 24th, we had over a dozen people turn out in South Utica. We went to five places, filled over 30 bags with trash. I, I made the, the projects the biggest to the smallest, thinking people would peel off, and they didn't, so the entire team stayed together the, the whole time. It was really, it was great, and I know that people were doing that throughout the city, which was terrific. I do want to thank Mayor Palmieri for, for, for this next step of, of beginning slowly the process of very safely opening City Hall, making it possible for us to bring the public back into this meeting. I think that that's very important, but I know that he's been doing it very carefully in order to protect the health, not just of the public, but of course of all the people who work in this building, and I, I commend him for that. I have a couple pieces of quick business this evening. First is that I would like to discharge from committee local law five of 2020. I would just like to discharge that if I could.
So motion to discharge local law number five from committee. Is there a second? Second from Miola. Any opposed? It's discharged.
Thank you. And then second, I would like to amend my ordinance number three by substituting for it the version that is in our, the version that is in our pre-meeting conference. I'd like to substitute that version for the meeting that is, for the version that is currently in the Codes Committee. I just want to amend by substitution those two pieces. Is that right?
Yes.
You're looking...
If you'd like, please make a motion to pull your current one from committee.
I'd like to, I'd like to move to, to pull my car-free Sunday ordinance...
From Codes?
...out of, out of Codes Committee.
Okay, second? We have a second from Moody. Any opposed for pulling that from committee?
And now...
Okay, motion to strike and replace the entire piece of legislation?
Now I would like to move to strike and replace the entire piece of legislation.
With the one that's before us on the screen?
Yes, with ordinance four.
A second, anyone? We have a second from DeBrango. Any opposed? Okay.
And now I would like to move to place that piece back into the Codes Committee, please.
Second? Anyone? Second from Moody. Any opposed to placing that back in committee? Okay, it's back in committee.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Fourth District and President Protemp, Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The future council is going to be opening up our doors to the public very soon, our next council meeting, so I, I'm glad our president is taking parameters to make sure that everybody is safe in our chambers. I'm hoping that people come back, and we do have some people in our chambers now, and thank you for coming very much. We know it's a COVID time, and we're not out of this yet, so please keep all the precautionary measures that we can, and keep our safe distance of six feet, and let's do our best to keep each other healthy. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you. Let me say that I have, I want to commend the Codes Department, they get, Marcus gets a lot of calls and text messages from me. I do want to just say that we in Cornhill do have a lot of problematic properties and homes, things that probably need to be abated and stuff. I want the public to know, and particularly my constituents, that it is a process. Continue to call, because we want to make sure that we have a note of those things, but if there is not an immediate response, oftentimes the city is held up as to what they can do with some of the nuisance property that we have around the city. The youth council is accepting applications. I would encourage all of us to at least think of a young person, if we know somebody, or a young person who is interested in these types of matters, of politics, more so how government works, community service in this way, to get those names over to Stephanie. The application is live, and we want to make sure that we have a diverse council again this year, from every aspect, all walks of life, and representing the totality of our city. There's a lot that, that we deal with as council people, and some of the issues that I have to deal with in Cornhill are beyond just a simple legislation and ordinance, particularly food crisis issues that we have. We don't have any grocery store and things of that nature in Cornhill. I, I'm very glad to have the support of the mayor on certain projects, and I just wanted to say publicly that, that the issues that we're tackling as a community are big, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and as a council person, making sure that we tackle some of those issues. Now, I will, I do want to move ordinance one to pla, a motion to place it in the Codes Committee. That's the no parking at all times on Eagle Street. I know there were a few questions from my colleagues, and I want to make sure that we have adequate time to address them.
Mr. President, I'll second his motion to refer to committee.
Okay. I will bring the legislation up on the screen. Sorry, I had to reconnect the web, actually the internet went down for a moment there.
No problem.
Okay, is this the piece, Councilman Moody?
Yes.
All right, there's a motion, was there a second? Thank you. Any opposed? All right, it's in committee. Thank you.
Happy Single De Mayo, and that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Bedris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank Mr. DiVicaro for his presentation tonight, it was pretty awesome. I know we thanked him before, but I want to personally take time to thank him. I got to be honest with you, he educated me a little bit on a lot of items that I knew nothing about. I also want to thank, again, I don't want to be redundant, but Codes Department, I'm in the same boat with Marcus and his, his crew, always there for me. And I am also happy that a piece of the legislation that I'm going to bring out is basically, it's because of what I see in the parks when I take my walk during the day and stuff, and I'll get into that after. I'd like, I'm very happy that next week, next meeting, that we'll be open to the public, and I am working in the sixth ward to get our neighborhood meetings back open. I know our, our senior center has been taken over by the neighborhood center, and I'm going to be trying to get in there to see if, down the road, we'll be able to open and have our, our monthly meetings. Other than that, I'm going to bring out ordinance number five. No parking at all times. Ordained that Section 216360, Schedule E, no parking at all times is amended to include the following: Ludlow Ave East Side, Ludlow Ave West Side, Park Street East Side, Park Street West Side. Be it further ordained that the proper signage be erected where necessary. And for those of you who don't know where this is, it's the, the roads that connect the two parks. And I wa, I walked there, I've been seeing a lot, I've had a couple constituents call me, you know, the people parking... You know, the people parking the car, and I don't really have the issue with the parking, but it seems like when they park there, they just litter and it's a mess. And I'm just reading, we're going to have, with the mayor, we're going to have these people from Fort Drum fly in with the helicopters, and that's in the park, and I'm hoping that we have this cleaned up, because I, too, a few weeks ago, we cleaned that park up on a Saturday, and I was back there on a Tuesday, and it was like we were never there. So, I just ask everybody, we have a beautiful park there, we have a lot of people putting time into it, and just pick up your garbage. I mean, it's not that hard. Put it in your car, put it in a bag, put it in the garbage pail where they are, and let's just be proud of our city and our parks. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I apologize to having to get up at the, we just have internet bouncing issues today. Thank you, Councilman Beatrice.
Motion second.
Oh, I'm sorry, you explained all that legislation. Yeah, we never, and we never.
I know you're doing three things at once, Michael, that's why we're helping.
So, you have the motion. Miola, you have the second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry.
It's all right.
Keeping my mind on tactical stuff today.
I know you are.
Got to wear multiple hats here. Your votes.
90s adopted.
Thank you. Anything else this evening?
Thank you.
Thank you. Minority Leader and Councilman-at-Large, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pull out of Codes Committee the Ordinance Number 3, Section 218-48-5 exception for the Valley View Master Garden Road, you know, carefree Sundays. I'd like to pull that out.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Beatrice. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? It's out of committee.
All right, I like to, I would like to get this on the floor. We had no, nobody was for this two weeks ago, and I think we're just beating a dead horse with this, and I think we just need to move it on.
So, you'd like to bring it to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Actually, it's already on the floor, so your votes.
I think.
Clear the board, please. Councilman Miola?
Thank you.
Okay.
One second. Play what we're voting. Vote yes, defeated. Vote no, it's passed.
No, no is defeated. Vote yes, it passed.
Right, typical vote, piece of legislation. If you'd like to see it pass, vote yea. If you'd like to see it not pass, vote nay.
Point of order, is that a normal, anybody can, I mean, I just want to ask the question. Anybody can take out any legislation at any time?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, as long as it's by majority vote of the council, yes. All right. Your votes.
I have voted.
5 knees defeated.
Okay, anything else, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay, Council-at-Large, Jack Lamedico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'd kind of just like to thank that young man over there for the great job he did on the flag today. It gets me thinking, you know, what we should do in the future here, and I'd like to bring you in again on the committee, if we do form one, and to see what we could come up with. Second, I'd like to thank the mayor for opening up City Hall, and I'd like to commend him for the job he did working with the mayor of Rome, working together, and settling exactly how they would like to do it, and they did it in a safe and orderly manner, I think, and we'll see how it goes in, at our next meeting. And I did one other thing before I move, I have to move something here. We had, I put together a resolution, and it was, Council of the Hall, when we did pass it, had to do with a nursing home resolution that we sent to the Assembly as well as to the Senate there. And I just received a note from Sarah Cooper from SC-1199, SCIU, their representative, and she said, this is what she told me. It looks like the nursing home staffing legislation passed in New York State Legislature. We are just waiting for Governor Comer to sign it into law. It would establish a minimum of 3.5 hours of care per residence per day. The, and she adds on to legislation, could not have passed without you, and when she says you, and she means the whole council here, so I really appreciate everybody backing me on that. I'm grateful, so very grateful for all of you did to help make this legislation pass, and she said it was a big deal that we did send that forward, and so once again, I'd like to thank everybody here for voting for that, and thank you on that. And then, I just have one last thing, Resolution Number 2. I'd like to move it. Resolve that common council does hereby appoint the following persons of Commissioner of Deeds for the City of Utica for a two-year term commencing May 5th to 2021 and ending December 31st, 2022, in the names of Lawrence A. Joseph and Rosemary Joseph.
All right, there's a second from DeBrango. Your votes.
90s adopted.
Thank you. Anything else this evening?
No.
Thank you. All right, before we move on, I just want to remind the council, there is another piece of legislation that we considered, which is the public hearing. Councilman DeBrango is always on top of that, but you always get the extras. Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution Number 3, calling for the public hearing regarding a discontinuous of Ash Street. I'd like to bring that out to the floor and call for a public hearing. I believe it's going to be June 16th.
Yes, we've amended the legislation from pre-meeting conference, and it is specified June 16th, 2021. June 16th, 2021, yes. Thank you, Judge. We have a second from Williamson. Your votes on the resolution calling for the public hearing?
90s adopted.
Thank you very much. Would you like to place the other piece in committee?
Ordinance Number 4, discontinuance of Ash Street.
We have a second to place that in committee. It's the ordinance providing for the discontinuance of a portion of Ash Street for street purposes and the sale of the same. Any opposed to placing that in committee? Okay, it's in committee of the whole. Anything else this evening?
Yeah, just a couple things I want to discuss.
Thank you.
Regarding Councilman Beatrice's signage there on Ludlow. I do walk the park as well, and he's right, that area, it is littered constantly. We do have people parking there, eating their lunch, whatever they're doing, but there is a ton of litter. But I do notice at times that some people do go through, and they pick up the litter, they put it in black bags, they leave it by the cement barriers, and what I do is I'll take a picture of it, and I'll send it to the mayor's office, and the next day or two, that is all picked up and cleaned up, so. But they do litter that area a lot, so I think it's a good idea to have them stop parking there. There is a parking area, probably a good 50 to 100 feet away. It's equipped with, you know, trash cans and things of that nature, so hopefully that would help out if they could just relocate over there and finish their lunch or whatever they may be doing and use the trash cans. As far as the council meeting's coming up and being open to the public, I want to thank the mayor for that. We are going to have a list of guidelines for people who are going to want to attend. I did mention it to the clerk, maybe we could put it online as well, so you could kind of read it, and so you're prepared when you do come, but just follow the CDC guidelines, and I'm sure that we will be able to accommodate whoever shows up at the meeting. We are going to try to space everybody out six feet apart. As far as the legislation that we approved for the SCIU 99, part of that legislation for nursing homes and healthcare workers was understaffing, and there was, part of it is minimum staffing, and I think it's a big part, because you're going to get better patient care. Some of the times, you see some nurses and caretakers, you know, they're watching 10, 15 patients at a time sometimes in some of these nursing homes, and it's overwhelming, and they're working long hours and overtime and things of that nature, so I think it's a good legislation. I think it would help hiring more workers, which everybody could use, you know, better pay and good jobs today, and it's a pretty good job there, and it is a unionized job, so that's a good thing. So, I commend Councilman Lamedico for bringing it up, and I thank everybody here for signing on to that, and hopefully we did make a little bit of a difference by sending a letter to the Assembly person and to senators and the governor, so. I think that is all I have for this evening, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, we have a motion on the table that I would like to pull from the table, which would be to unsuspend our regular rules of order. Since we're going to have the public back in the meeting two weeks from tonight, I would like to reinstate our regular rules of order.
So.
Or the 19.
Or effective immediately. Actually, I think we need to make it effective immediately. I mean, right. Right, tonight, it won't include, yeah, so effective immediately that we unsuspend and reinstate our regular rules of order.
So, there was a question, which was laid on the table at the previous meeting, and that was to unsuspend our rules. You're making a motion to take that question from the table. Is there a second? We have a second from Moody. Any opposed for bringing that question back to the floor? Okay, so the main motion on the floor is to unsuspend the rules of the common council now that we will be back in, into the swing of things. We have a second. We have a second from Miola. Your votes. Okay.
Motion.
Well, I've got some, I've got a few things. Real quick.
I don't want that to happen.
That's all right. That's all right. Oh, okay. All right, so just a couple things. First off, I'd like to personally thank, as well as many of the others, Nicholas DiVicaro for coming in and putting so much time into that presentation. Just so you're aware, I'm going to forward your presentation to the council so that they all have that. Do I have your permission to give them your email address? I'd like to just ask you. So, they may contact you. Okay, so I'll give them your contact information. I will also, this was obviously directed by the mayor to the council first. I'll also put you back in contact with the mayor's office so that if they would like to either discuss or see that presentation from you personally, they can contact you on that as well, as the city is obviously not just controlled by the legislative branch, but anything done by the legislative branch then is approved by the executive. So, it does also require the mayor any type of consideration like that, and us to work collaboratively on that. The next thing, the COVID guidelines. After the discussion during the pre-meeting conference, some comments were coming in on council people's text lines, if you will, about the restrictions we may impose. I'd like to be clear, the discussions, the council had to have an open conversation in pre-meeting conference. That's what the council does. Certain things that were discussed will not be happening. We will not be requiring people to have a vaccine to enter. We will not be requiring people to have a test before entering. All we will be doing is following the New York State Executive Order Guidelines for Events as administered by the county, because the City of Utica is in the county. So, what should be expected is simply, before entering the building, you will be required to wear a mask, and you will be required to just verbally answer some questions on if you've been exposed and if you have symptoms of COVID-19, and then you will simply be required to enter your name and contact information in a register so that if there is an exposure, the proper contact tracing can commence. We will be making sure that the meetings can open smoothly, and we can bring the public back into the building now that the mayor has opened the front door. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
I have one last thing that I'd like to, I just want to thank and recognize our county legislator, Anthony Leone, for attending.
Thank you.
Thank to see some more of our legislators come on down and visit us. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone? Motion?
Oh, listen.
Motion to?
Your end.
All right. Have a great evening. Okay.